I've turned the recorder on. It's 6:03 PM. This is the Bluff Town Council Public Hearing. Roll call.
Jennifer Dovilo.
Brett Hornsby.
Linda Sosa.
Luanne Hook.
Ann Leppenin.
Erin Nelson, serving as Town Manager.
Then I'm going to turn this navigation over to Erin Nelson.
Thank you, Ann. All righty, agenda for tonight. I'm going to go over a quick reminder of rules of procedure and a summary of the public hearing topic. We will take public comments from the folks in person first, then we will take public comments from those attending virtually, that's online and over the phone, and then we'll adjourn. All righty, so a few rules of procedure. Each speaker tonight has allotted no more than three minutes. Please begin your comment with your full name. Also, if you'd like to let us know if you would like a one-minute warning, we're happy to provide that to you. Just tell us as you get started, and we'll hold up a nice little sign to let you know. You are not allowed to give any of your remaining time to another individual. Comments should be directed to the council, not to audience members or the public. Conduct that disturbs, disrupts, or impedes the orderly business of council shall result in the offender's removal from the meeting. That includes making loud noises, clapping, shouting, all of that, and that also includes online participants. Please unmute your line until you've been called upon to speak. Written comments submitted via email have been distributed to council. That deadline was 5:00 PM today. They will not be read aloud. All written comments will be posted on the town website, including those that were collected tonight. So we do have sheets over there, line sheets, if you do, if you'd like to make a written public comment in addition to or instead of a verbal comment today. Those are on the sign-in table. Online attendees are not allowed to write public comments in the chat box. We are also disabling your ability to message others in the meeting. And please silence your cell phones now. Those wishing to make a public comment, you'll have until the end of my presentation and the summary of the topic to sign up on the write-in sheet over there. Your names will be randomized into a list of speakers, which will then be given to Mayor Leppenin, and she will invite each speaker to speak, or invite each speaker up to the podium to speak. If you need us to bring a microphone to you, we can also do that. For those online, please write your name in the chat box. This is the time to do that. We will also randomize the order of those speakers. Please remain muted until you've been asked to speak. Again, if you'd like a one-minute warning prior to the end of your three minutes, let us know. And if you're on the phone after this presentation and summary of the topic, you will be invited to unmute yourself to indicate if you'd like to make a public comment. You'll be put into the list, a queue of random folks as well. I understand you don't have the ability to, to, to put your name in the chat box, so we'll, we'll give you time to, to speak up as well. All right, so the reason we are all here tonight. On May 5th, 2023, Bluff Town Council received a petition to disconnect 9,514 acres, approximately, from the town of Bluff. That is from Bruce Baird. His clients are Kim and Ida Acton. Lands include 640 acres of private Acton property, that's Section 16, that's one square mile, approximately 7,370 acres of trust lands administration property, approximately 1,338 acres of BLM property, and approximately 166 acres of St. Christopher's Mission property. August 15th of that same year, a public hearing was held to seek input on the petition to disconnect, subject to Utah Code. And two years ago today, the Bluff Town Council voted unanimous unanimously to deny the petition to disconnect in its entirety. October 18th of 2023, the Actons filed a lawsuit against the town of Bluff, seeking to disconnect those same lands as stated in the petition. On October 25th, Sitla moved to intervene in the case, and on January 8th of 2024, Judge Torgerson grants that motion. Since that time, throughout 2024 and 2025, the town of Bluff has been moving through the steps of litigation, including discovery, depositions, and attempting to negotiate a settlement agreement with all parties. June 2nd, after some of the negotiations did not result in a settlement agreement, we went into a pre-trial conference. Judge Torgerson ordered all parties to engage in mediation prior, prior to the trial, and those trial dates are set for January 12th, 13th, and 14th of this coming year, 2026, and mediation is scheduled for October 15th. During the last year, the Bluff Town Council has indicated a willingness to review the disconnection request specifically for the Acton property. While the formal disconnection petition sought the disconnection of just over 9,500 acres, this hearing today is to address the real property owned solely by the Actons. I'd like to note that this review and hearing is not required by law, but is a discretionary decision by the Bluff Town Council. The official hearing for the disconnection petition that was received was conducted in 2023 pursuant to Utah State Code. So this is a discretionary decision to invite public comment on this petition again. We know some time has passed since that last hearing. So the map ahead, before you is the entire petition to disconnect. The boundaries, including what's in yellow and pink, that is the entire incorporated Bluff Town limits, and then the pink in its, by itself, is the petition to disconnect. In Section 16, which has the arrow to it, that is the Acton property. Again, one square mile or 640 acres. Staff, myself, released a staff report. It is on the town's website. There are also maybe still a couple copies over there. It is pretty much a summary of what we've talked about today. It does have some additional appendices online, which includes the official, you know, the, the original petition, as well as, you know, the motion to intervene and, and items like that. It shows a couple more maps. Yeah. Also included in the staff report is acknowledgement of the noticing requirements for a public hearing, and they have been met and outlined. All righty, so I would encourage folks to please take the next one to two minutes to sign up if you'd like to make a public comment. Again, there's a paper on the table over there. If you'd like to sign up, if you're here in the room with us. For those online, please place your name in the chat box. Do not use chat box for your actual comments. This is against the rules of procedure, and you will be removed from the meeting if you do this. And then for folks, I don't know if anyone's joined on, via phone, but if they are, they can unmute themselves. If they're on the phone only and don't have access to the chat box, they can unmute themselves and let us know if they want to make a comment, and then they will be put into the online category. So we'll take just a couple minutes. I don't see anyone sprinting for the signup sheets.
Erin, it's not letting me into chat.
Ah, perfect. Okay. So that's a good, good record. So Marcia, can I put you on the list that you'd like to make a public comment?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. I think Malia's trying to make some setting changes, but if there's anyone else online who would like to make a public comment, please feel free to unmute yourself right now and just share your name.
Can you put in the chat box?
Or you can try in the chat box one more time, and it should work right now. Sorry for the technical issues. All righty.
Last call.
All right, I'm going to stop sharing my screen really fast. Get all these in here. Okay.
You're still streaming.
Oh, no. Well, you can see I'm going to, about to randomize it, so that's good. Where did my stop go? Stop sharing. There you go. Okay.
Is that, you know, the chat box, or they need to do it verbally?
What's that?
So that online people, they have to, um...
Yeah, yeah.
And you put it in chat box?
Yep, so this is the last call for anyone online. If you'd like to make a public comment, please put your name in the chat box, or if the chat box isn't working, you can unmute yourself and let us know your name right now. Ann, would you like me to read out the order of these, or do you want me to turn it over to you?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay. All righty, so I'm going to read out the order for the folks here in the room, so you can kind of know who you were following, and then Ann will invite you to the microphone when your time is come. All right. Number one, Josh Ewing. Number two, Omar Tumay. Number three, Mike Yarris. Number four, Reverend Jack Chase. Number five, Kirsten Ewing. Number six, Gary Haas. And to round us out, Marx Powell, you will be number seven. Okay.
And Jen, your timing.
Timing.
Yep. Please remember to let us know if you want a one-minute warning. Yes, please.
I'll take one.
Okay.
I'm going to put my timer on here, too. Are we ready to go?
Yep.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for hearing us tonight. Josh Ewing, 405 East Black Locust. You know, I can only imagine how much stress and frustration this issue has caused to you all. I know you, you're not getting paid tonight. You're not getting paid any night that you're here, even when there's a lot fewer people than you are tonight, and we really all thank you for your service to our community, even when we may not agree with every one of your decisions. But let's be clear why there are more people here than normal tonight, and it's because Bluff is being targeted and being bullied. Why? Because we want to have a say in our town's future, because we have dared to express our First Amendment rights to advocate for protecting our backyard, for protecting Bear's Ears and the sacred landscape we're so lucky to enjoy here in Bluff. Never before, that I know of, has the state of Utah attacked one of its towns in this way, using money that could be going to school kids in a take, in an attempt to cut our town in half. The state is conspiring with a private landowner, neither of whom ever approached, approached the town in good faith to propose development on their properties. Neither said a word when the voters of Bluff overwhelmingly approved incorporating with these boundaries, or when the Lieutenant Governor's Office certified our town's creation. But now they're spending tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars to sue us, all with no explanation of their plans. Can you even imagine them doing this if Blanding or Monticello were trying to protect their aquifer? While we don't know their endgame, we do know that there's a lot at stake. While I've lived here in Bluff, we've seen three different proposals for oil drilling and fracking north of our town over our aquifer, one of them on state trust land. We've also seen a massive expansion of gravel mining above Bluff, with no remediation or flood mitigation being proposed. And we've seen a baffling proposal by the state to take even more land in our town when they're trying to get out of the town. So we're not paranoid to be worried, we're prudent to defend ourselves. While some had, would say we should not spend the money, I say it's worth the long-term investment to protect our community. We want to be reasonable, but when people don't come to the table, you can't be reasonable back. So my plea to you tonight is this: Please don't tie the hands of your incoming mayor and incoming council. Don't take an action tonight that takes options off our table. I've been two, two minutes and 47 seconds. Did you start it early? I got one more sentence left here. It's a, it's a good sentence. You all have done so much good for our town. You've gotten us this far. Let's not give these folks what they want when we don't even know what they want. Thanks for your consideration.
Next up is Omar Tumay.
I'll take that one-minute warning, please.
Yes, sir.
Are we all going to get the extra time, more than three minutes? All right, one sentence. I just wanted to express how very disappointed I am in the tone and tenor of Josh Ewing's letter. The letter reads like a political ad with emotionally charged words that you repeated here tonight. Words like, "Bluff is being threatened, being bullied, Utah is conspiring with a private landowner, that, that this, this issue, this legal issue is not of our own choosing." As a matter of fact, this is exactly what we wanted, because when Bluff Incorporated, the question came up, do we start small and then annex land as we grow, or do we start big? And Josh Ewing's answer was, "You start as big as you can." And the reason we did that is more land is within the monument, and we would get federal dollars for having Bluff property within the monument. Things like, "This would create a dangerous precedent to send the message that wealthy people get what they want just because they're willing to sue us because they don't like our decisions." Sometimes, you know, when you have ill-advised decisions, you do invite lawsuits. And when we're talking about wealthy people, I don't know how many of you guys know Eric Acton and Kim Acton before him. They were both my Cisco salespeople. I would hardly call either one of them rich people. They're the salt-of-the-earth people. As a matter of fact, I wish more people in Bluff were like them. Let's see. The letter reads that we want the council to defend Bluff's boundaries. Those boundaries were arbitrary and capricious. They, the decision was made without any logical or reasonable basis. We just wanted to have as, thank you, the biggest small town in Utah, apparently. Anything that you hear about the aquifer and the watershed is not true. We have a contained aquifer. Our water is charged from the Blue Mountains. It takes 55 years for the water to get to our aquifer. It is contained, and we, it can be contaminated. So the option is, is clear in my mind. We can pool our poverty and continue this lawsuit, which, as a business owner, I'm tired of financing. Half the town's income comes from Bluff dwellings and desert roads, and, you know, all the business owners in Bluff, and I think we should use our money for something that's worthwhile. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. What's that?
Would you like the two-minute warning?
Sure. I'm hoping it won't take that long, but anyway. I think that, what's that?
Say your name.
Oh, my name's Mike Yarris. I'm with Coral Sands RV Park, and I kind of echo some, some of the things that have already been spoken to a point. Bluff did a land grab, in my opinion, to control, and I think we way overextended. For a town this small, they have no business grabbing 30-some square miles and thinking that we can afford to manage and take care of that. It's just all about control, and that's just my opinion. The water aquifer, I, I truly have listened to what's been said, being on the water board, and I think our water is safe. We need to focus more on our river water and figure out some way to use that before we lose it. I think everything that happens in this town is to keep it from growing, population-wise, because nobody wants any young people in here whatsoever. Now, I know there's a bunch of people in here that are older and retired, they have money in the bank, they've got, or they've invested well over the years, good for you. Some of us are still working. We've got plans for our kids and our grandkids. And for the rest of you that are older, who, I guess, want to sit in here and retire in this wonderful community, all by yourselves, with no distractions or inconveniences, you know what? You've got a problem, because other people still have a life to live, and we still need to go forward. Thank you.
Reverend Chase, you're next.
Good evening. Reverend Jack Chase from St. Christopher's Mission. This is my third time of being in interim at St. Christopher's. I first started in 2016 on a sabbatical from the church I was serving in, in Texas. Came back in 2020, just before the COVID broke out, and then worked with, very closely with Reagan Woodso Lucy, who was looking for a place to bring the community of Bluff and Mission together by creating a, a community garden. And that came to fruition under my successor. We began building it, he arrived, and he, he continued that, and we did achieve, one of the things we really wanted to do, which was to have a close relationship and being part of Bluff. Having been incorporated into Bluff, we found it's mutual benefit for both St. Christopher's, for the surrounding community, and, and for the town of Bluff. If you go to those community gardens, just, just one example, during, during the COVID, we worked together with numerous agencies around here, and that's when we really saw that we were, were really part of this community. And I want to commend the town of Bluff for their willingness to work with us and make us feel like part of the community. And I really want to just reiterate what we said in 2023, which is, we do not wish to be separated from the town of Bluff. Whatever you do in terms of working out the mediation, I want to be very clear about that. And my bishop and canon, the ordinary for the diocese are on this video call, and they'll probably have more to say about it. I know the bishop has submitted a written comment. But I think it's very, very important that the whole thing, thank you, the whole thing that we are as a church is we don't exist for ourselves, is that we need to exist for the community in which we serve. And we want to continue to be a member of that community, and I am quite distressed that we were not invited into the mediation, but still included in the separation. I just, I, I just want to commend you for the work you're trying to do to come to some sort of commendation with the Actons, and I don't think it's a time for harsh words, but I do think it is a time for reconciliation, and that's what we should be all about, and that's what we hope to be as, as a church in this community. Thank you.
The next is Kirsten Ewing.
Hey, I want to start by saying thank you. Oh, sorry, Kirsten Ewing, 405 East Black Locust. Thank you for all the time and energy you've put into this as our council and our representatives, and in representing our town. Here are my concerns, that there is a lack of transparency and cooperation from the asking parties, both the Actons and Sitla. We don't know what they want to do. If I knew, then maybe I could make a more educated decision, but you've probably been privy to more information than we have, and in that, I want to place my trust that if you make a decision to compromise, that it's the right decision for our town. At the same time, this is the same group that called us screaming activists, just for defending ourselves and questioning their motivations, and it is about control. I agree with Mike. I live here. I want control over what happens to the future of my water. I want to know that for generations to come, it will be safe. And I do think that should somebody decide to drill through rock, that there is always potential for damage to be done to water, and water is gold in the desert. So my feelings are the same as they were in the last meeting in 2023, and allowing the Acton disconnect may be the compromise, but we also don't have any assurances that Sitla would relinquish their request, should we choose to do that. So I agree that this does set a bed precedent, and I hope you'll take my comments into consideration. Thank you.
Gary Haas.
That one's a harder to follow. I'm Gary, excuse me, I'm Gary Haas, 165 Calf Canyon Road, Mayor Town Council, appreciate this. I will try and not repeat what has been said, but echo those sentiments. I wasn't privy to this in 2023, and just have been studying up and trying to find as much as I can on the issues at hand from what's been printed, emailed, and talked about. There's talk about upsetting the town's watershed, so I looked up watershed, watched the videos on what watershed is. And watershed is a land area that channels rainfall and snowmelt to creeks, streams, and rivers. So I drove up on the, on the area in question, and any water that lands up there that is channeled would just flow north to the river. It doesn't come in west to Bluff. The town gets its water, like was said, from Artesian Well, which is a well that brings groundwater to the surface without pumping, because it is under pressure within a body of rock on sediment, or sediment, known as an aquifer, so the watershed wouldn't affect our aquifer. This public hearing I read on the town's notice is, is in regards to 640 acres and of private land. It's surrounded, yes, by BLM and state land. It brings the town revenue of less than $24 a year. From the costs of what I've heard of the lawsuit so far, is that it will take us 3,750 years to pay back or recoup the loss of the lawsuit so far. The town of Bluff cannot even provide services to that area in question. The area around 640 is BLM and state land, which they do control and do what they, they want with it. Wikipedia shows Bluff with 36 square miles, the 640 acres is one square mile. The town is not losing half of its township, only losing one square mile, if it's the total 640, plus the state land that's under 15 square miles. We're not being threatened and bullied. The town just needs to be willing to work with any of these groups to come to an equitable outcome. It's time to take off the gloves and start shaking hands. I heard the town cut money for MMS and put it to legal fees. I feel strongly it's time to stop spending money frivolously like this lawsuit that do not help our town move forward. Take the money and focus on moving forward, like on roads, secondary water, affordable housing. When you hit the ground, you don't start digging. You get up, dust yourself off, and move forward. I was told once, there's a time, you fall on your sword during a fight. I believe this is not the time. Work with them, let it go. Thank you.
Marx Powell, I think you're next.
My name is Marx Powell. I've been around Bluff for quite a long time, and know quite a little bit about the history of all of this and the water. Now, what, what I'm, what I'm stating is, in Josh's words, that states that Bluff is being threatened and bullied, addressing, addressing this statement, neither the Actons nor Sitla chose to be placed in the, our, our town. It was something that was forced on them. They didn't even have a vote. They didn't even have a vote. So when we're all this starts, I ask, who's bullying and who's threatening who? Okay? I understand and appreciate everything that's been done so far. And everything's been done so far with this has been done with good intentions by good people, but it's been done with emotion rather than fact. Okay? We're gonna look at some facts. Fact number one, Bluff's decision to fight this disconnect was determined not by majority vote, but by the majority of the people that showed up at a public hearing. Therefore, it was totally Bluff's decision to start this. Nothing was forced upon us that we could have simply allowed the disconnect and then we were done. Number two, Bluff cannot afford to provide services to this property, even if it wanted to. Number three, Bluff receives little or no income from this property. Number four, all of the state land in this disconnect is totally out of the control of Bluff. It's watershed, well, let's see, as far as not telling Bluff what they're doing, it's simple. Why don't we ask Blanding and White Mesa to tell us what we're doing? They affect our watershed more than that would. Again, like Gary said, we are in a contained aquifer, and watershed has zero effect on our drinking water in this town. I've got some more, but the ideology of the state or the incorporated area, over 90% of our incorporated area is state and BLM and SITLA land anyway, that we can't inhabit or have any control of. So the bottom line, what I look at, it's time to end this, quit spending the money, and start spending money on stuff that will help Bluff, like roads, secondary water, and other issues. Affordable housing, issues that matter, that matter to the people, instead of sitting there and having people tell, you know, trying to control what people do. Thank you.
So now we go to online.
Yes. Malia, do you have a list of folks online? Okay. That's Ms. Haydenfeld. Okay. Mrs. Marcia Haydenfeld, would you please unmute yourself at this time, and we will set the clock for you? Oh. Unmute.
Sorry, I thought I did. Is that better?
We've got you. Thank you.
Okay. One of the things that happens when you come to speak later on is that most of what you were thinking has already been said, but I will try and make it just a little more from my point of view, and that is that I agree with so much that was said today about new people coming to town and new places for them to be and work and do. And I think that our aquifer is pretty safe. Run-off water is always a question around here, floods are known to be. So a lot of what's been talked about is, in fact, where I agree with. What I had written down was, I don't mind if there's a neighbor who owns a section of undeveloped land and has an idea about how to use that land, but what I do mind is a neighbor who won't come to the town management with an idea of what to do and propose a way to make it happen. So why didn't the landowners who started this come forward and say, "We would like to use our property for something other than what is shown in the zoning code, and we hope we can work with you"? As a zoning person, however, I'm speaking for myself, not for planning and zoning. As a zoning person, I can say, there are often times when people should bring forward ideas, because the town would go, "Whoa, that's a great idea, let's think of ways to make it work." And instead, we were approached by a man who literally said that we were stupid to fight him because he was going to sue us off the map. So my hope is that, and then, by the way, this expanded from the one section, which I understand we're addressing this evening, but it cannot be, the one section cannot be disconnected in thought from the entire SITLA and BLM process. And by the way, the church needs to step up in its own legal way and step out of this, if they'd like to. Please don't kowtow to the man and the neighbors who brought him to us. If mediation will bring us the discussion that should have happened in the first place, what do you want to do with the land and how might we adjust to make it possible, then for heaven's sakes, ask the judge to show the neighbor and the agencies involved that they can't take over a town's authority to plan for its future. I believe that mediation is a wonderful suggestion. I'm hopeful that we can all talk about ways to make their secret plan reality without going through this, and only as a last resort should we have to fight it in the courts. Please talk amongst yourselves and...
That's time.
Thank you, Erin.
Thanks, Marcia. I know we had a couple of technical difficulties, I just wanted to double-check that everyone online was able to indicate if they wanted to make a comment. Okay, I don't see anyone else.
Thank you all for coming.
Second?
It is 6:40 PM. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Anyone opposed? It's unanimous, the recorder is being turned off. Thank you, Craig.